Sixteen sixty-eight for CCD twenty-eight thousand four thirty seventy-nine. And then for our MVH, your motor vehicle highway restricted, one hundred and twenty-three nine thirteen fifty-nine. And that's because we got the community crossing grant process. So we have to carry the money over from this year in order to pay our percentage for next year.
Questions from council? Yeah, looking for motions from council.
I make a motion to accept resolution twenty-five dash twenty-twenty-one in conferences for twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Motion second, Sandy, when you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on this evening's agenda is the ordinance on first reading, which is ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-one to amend the hook-on fee policy.
We talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, and I thought I had given Sandy a copy for the council members packet, and evidently I did not. But in any event, the purpose of this amendment is to make it clear that a developer can only pay for a hook-on fee once they have secured a building permit and they've laid the foundation for their project. We don't want to treat hook-ons like forever stamps where you buy a hundred or fifty at a time. And I think Michael can speak to this better than I can about the accounting problems that might cause for utilities to keep track of all those hook-on fees for months or years at a time. So this just makes it clear that if you're a developer, you can only get a hook-on fee once your project is underway. Or you can only buy the hook-on and pay the hook-on fee once your project is well underway.
And to be clear, we're talking about a lot.
Sure.
I'm sorry, Mike, the very end of yours trail though.
I said, just to be clear, we're talking about when a builder decides to build on a lot. Once they get the permit and have a foundation, that's when they can get a hook-on.
Okay. Is there any questions from council or discussion? I mean, this is ordinance on first reading, however, we have heard a little bit about this before. Seeing now, remind the public that this will come back to us again at the next council meeting, so that would be the public hearing, chance for you to ask questions concerning this policy. Now we're moved to ordinance on second reading, first is ordinance twenty-twenty regarding the nineteen-seventy-seven police and fire pension and disability fund.
Based on the comments by council last time, I revised the ordinance, and you should have two copies. You should have the old copy or the first draft with the changes noted. And then I also gave everyone a clean copy so that you can see what it will look like if the council passes it. So essentially what I did is I took out previous section four, which states that any police officer or firefighter who fails to pass the minimum baseline physical examination and thereafter hired by the town will be included in perf. So that's excised. And I substituted in place of that, this ordinance does not apply to the town marshal, the chief deputy marshal, the fire chief, or the deputy fire chief. So anybody hired who's anyone other than the number one and number two on the police and the fire department, they have to pass the minimum physical examination and they have to be in the nineteen-seventy-seven fund. And those were the changes that I made.
Questions from council or discussion? Just one quick question, Darla. Do we potentially need to add a line about part-time officers or part-time firemen not having to be part of the nineteen-seventy-seven fund?
I don't think so, because as I understand the statute, it only applies to full-time period.
Want to make sure. Anything else from council? Any discussion questions from the public? Seeing none, back to council for action.
I make a motion to accept ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash twenty regarding the nineteen-seventy-seven police and fire pension disability fund as amended.
As amended.
I'll second.
Motion second, Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank you to Chief Korman and for all the work doing the background on this.
Well, thank you. I want to add one thing if I could.
Sure.
The reason it was put in there about the town marshal, chief deputy, fire chief or deputy fire chief is, you know, for the council members, it's not uncommon to hire from the outside of our departments. And I didn't want to saddle the town down the road when they may have a good person to lead the department, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. I hope we have good people within, but we never know. Politics do change. Want to leave that open. Also, it doesn't mean that a new fire chief, deputy chief, town marshal, or chief deputy isn't already in the seven-seven plan. It just means that it necessarily has to be. So that was a clarification on that, and I want to say thank you all for voting on this. This is monumental. This is something we've been trying for a long time and not without its challenges, and we're going to look through those, and I do appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-two fixing the salaries for budget year twenty-twenty-two.
I guess I'll step in and recommend that the board approve the budget as presented originally. And that's it. Just asking for a vote.
So with basically withdrawing the amendments that were laid out in last week's, our last meeting?
Yeah, after reading the minutes from the last meeting, everybody had a comment, everybody had an idea. I'll get all their comments and ideas and put them in order. So when we tackle that subject specific to planning, it'll be in the budget for twenty-twenty-three. Had a conversation with one of the department heads today, and we talked about why we presented the budget we did for this year regarding salaries. And we went through the wage study. There was a lot of money that was demanded of the wage study to get to get all the departments and their positions in a range that we should pay them. So we decided at last year's budget meetings that we would follow a strict parameter and keep the budget tight to make sure that going into twenty-twenty-three, it was a good idea, we can afford it, and it didn't show any kind of detrimental effect on the monies that we have and will have in the future. So I think under the circumstances, and I do it with some reservations, I think we ought to just go for the budget as it relates to the salaries, just stick with what we originally presented.
Questions from council or discussion? Seeing none, any questions or discussion from the public? And back to the council for potential action.
I make a motion to accept ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash twenty twenty dash twenty-two fixing the salaries for budget year twenty-twenty-two.
And I'll second that. So when you're ready, Sandy.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now moving down to old business, which is the bond release for Green Bar Meadows Phase Five.
This is Kevin Clodion Planning. Work's not done, not even in the other sections of Phase Five that were supposedly done as of last week. So I don't see any reason why the town should accept any of these right-of-ways at this time.
Okay. Is there discussion? Mr. Farmer, do you concur? I know that you and I discussed this.
Well, I guess I'd, Kevin and I haven't had a chance to talk about this recently, but I guess I'd ask when they, when he says the work's not done, do we have a list of things that are not done, like without getting into nickel-dime issues? I mean, I mean, what, what is the problem? Because as I understood it, after the last meeting, that the petitioner basically was looking to have the street taken in for maintenance and plowing and all that, and that there was enough money in the letter of credit to cover the sidewalks, whether they got done or not. Is that, is that the way it is, Kevin?
Well, we don't take right-of-ways in until everything's done and the letter of credit's released. There's a piece of sidewalk missing. The curb ramps aren't finished, and if we take in, I don't know how you take in the road streets without taking in the whole right-of-way. I think that's just a messy situation. I, we've never done this since I've been here, at least. And I don't see any reason that should be changed now.
Okay, well, and, and to, you know, and one of the things, if we do, if we do take over the street and the right-of-ways have to come with it, then there's still construction in those right-of-ways. And I will say, you know, there's some forms up and there's material here and there. And so I would say that might become a liability for us. So that would be one reason we wouldn't want to do this. And if there's no rush, the fact that we will plow the streets, whether we own them or not, for the courtesy of the new residents in the area, I believe, I'm paraphrasing what Kip said, but so, I don't know, half a dozen of one, six of the other, what we do.
Darla, is there a way to take just the street and not the right-of-ways?
I was asked that at the last meeting, and I said yes. And then after I thought about it, that was probably not a good answer. So I understand Kevin's concern. It may be possible to do it, but as a bookkeeping measure, it's probably not a good idea. And I think he is correct that, I mean, I'm willing to take Kevin's word for it that we've never done it. So I'm not sure that's a good idea.
And I would like to also say, I've been on the planning for over twenty years. We've never done partials like that on sections that were not complete, so.
Well, let me, let me bring this, I guess, counterargument forward. I think it's in the best interest of the town and all the residents that that road remains open. However, and forgive me because I'm not exactly sure how much of the road is in the town already and how much is not. If it is not a town street, there, hesitate to even go down this road, but we have to publicly. If it's an out-of-town street, there's no speed limit on the street. There's no parking regulations on the street. There's no anything else on the street. So if it remains open, there's very little enforcement we can do there because we don't own the street to set the speed limit for it. Or we don't own the street in order to put any ordinance in effect regarding parking or any rights of way or anything like that. So it's open, and yes, it's a true benefit to the community, and I'm not advocating stepping out tremendously, I guess. But my concern is we have a, have a exposure here. And I don't know if that's something that concerns the rest of you enough that we act on it.
As a plan commission member, I too will agree with Dan's statement. You know, we went many years. The only time we accept the streets totally is when we add them by ordinance. And it, if we're not careful, we can get in a situation where we have to do repairs to an unfinished street. So these are fairly small streets. East Harrison is fairly small. I mean, they're not thoroughfares. Deer Run is. But the two I thought that he wanted are side streets, and I, I don't think, you know, there're going to be a lot of traffic other than the residents.
Deer Run's the one I'm concerned with because there is a lot of through traffic there.
Yeah, Deer Run's been open for a long time. Several years.
I'm not sure that most people in the town, even the employment of the town, were unaware that we had not yet adopted that street.
Kip, do you know for sure if we have not adopted Deer Run? It seems like that's in our road inventory.
Deer Run is in our road inventory from Ratliff Road to Lavender Court. And then just past Lavender Court till you get almost to the top of the hill there of Deer Run before you're going down into the bottom, I guess you would say where Anker Court's at, at the top of the hill there. I can't remember the exact block number. That portion is not in the town inventory. The rest of Deer Run is in town inventory. And I've got, I don't really mean to throw a wrench in this, but since we're talking about a lot of legality reasons of doing things here, what kind of response does this town have if we're cleaning the roads of a street that we don't own yet and something happens? I mean, J. Craig, back many, many, a few moons ago, that's something we just did. We just, I mean, the people are already living there. They're already citizens of the town of Eltville. We just started providing snow removals so they can access their house. So does that put the town in some kind of a liability for us cleaning a road that's not even ours yet?
Well, it might, but what have we done in the past when we've had a developer who hasn't completed all the work but wanted us to accept the right-of-way? I mean, what did we do in those situations?
I tend to agree. I mean, I wasn't involved a lot of this stuff twenty years ago, but last, you know, seven, eight years now, it's been generally, it's, it's all or nothing, is from what I understand, if I remember right. I don't want to point fingers or nothing like that, but we've got the same situation right now, and I'm getting ready to resurface it next spring. It never got resurfaced because this street kind of got, got by the wayside and it never got its final coat. But now I'm going to get it done this summer, coming summer with, with that, and I don't want that to happen here. I'm not saying that it will, but I kind of tend to agree that it's either, to me, I think it's either all or nothing.
And we, Kip, we released the bond on the street you're talking about, and it wasn't final-coded?
I don't know if we've ever accepted it. I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, it's before, I, I don't know. I really don't know if we've ever accepted it. I mean, I've already got it in inventory. I can tell you that. We already have it in inventory. The houses are just now, the last house has got finished this year on it. And Danny put it on the community crossings grant to get resurfaced, not resurfaced, to get surfaced for this upcoming year, and we did get it in the grant. So it will be resurfaced this year or in twenty-twenty-two.
And the original contractor's still building houses?
No, the original con, the original contractor went. Yep.
Yeah, I know what road you're talking about, and I think that's the reason why we, we took care of it because they went up and the bond expired, and we didn't renew the bond. And I think Sandy remembered that too several years ago. So.
And I'm not saying.
It was part of housekeeping, and that's when we started changing some things around when that happened because we did not want that to happen again. So.
Exactly. I mean, I don't, I feel like that if we were to do something like this, besetting a president in future, somebody, their next phase, they're not all the way done with it, they want to start their next phase, and we'll get it, you know. I just don't want to see that to happen.
I don't want to see that to happen either. However, again, looking at the totality of the circumstance, there are operations which we have carried out, whether it be snow removal, it be street repair, whether it be a policing function that have been carried out, most likely in an area of the street that we don't have jurisdiction in because everyone else thought that road was in the city or, excuse me, in the town. So again, that kind of, once again, it kind of points back to, we gotta get some type of controls over these things that a sequence of events before the road gets used or whatnot, because now we're finding out there's another road in the town that's existing that we've been exercising control over, where we really haven't ever accepted into the town's inventory yet.
Scott, we did accept it in the inventory. It is part of our street system. Because like they said, it was our fault. We let the bond expire, and the developer went belly up, so there was nothing we could do about it. So we had to take it into our inventory and resurface it.
Okay.
So, and I agree, it was our fault not doing the bookkeeping, so.
Well, it kind of makes me question how many others are out there that have got some issues.
And that's what I brought up when that happened, and that's why we worked to where it would never happen again. So I, I see what you're saying. I really do. And I think maybe if Darla could kind of check into a little bit and see what our liabilities are, that we have been taking care of it a little bit. And just one question I had too. It was the developer that was here last meeting, correct?
Mr. Smith was here at the last meeting.
And he said it was almost finished, correct?
Correct. That's my recollection.
Yeah.
My, yeah, my concern is releasing the bond before all of the work is done. So I mean, yes, I mean, you know, you can be sued for just about anything. There's a lot of creative people out there who can come up with it, with an argument. So I guess it's a matter of what are you more worried about? Are you worried about work not being completed and releasing the bond and getting stuck with that? Or are you more worried about the town being sued because the street department plows and there's an accident or something, you know? What, which is your greater concern, I suppose, is really the issue?
Well, for me, I mean, the accident's something, but like you said, we could be sued for anything. You know, as far as losing the bond and things like that, I don't think we have things in place now that that will never happen. But if we do start taking partials, then things could get confusing and set us up for more liability when they say, well, look, you took this over already. We're done.
Right. So. Well, and the next developer who comes along is going to say, well, for Mr. Jones, you took in the streets, even though X, Y, and Z wasn't finished, so why aren't you doing it for me? So.
Well, again, don't get me wrong, guys. I'm not advocating taking the Peter streets. That's, that's not part of this conversation, at least from my end. Where I am at is when we're talking about Deer Run, because it is being used as a thoroughfare daily at this point, I think it would be a major inconvenience to see that closed. Again, I know we've carried out operations on that, whether they be from whatever department already. My question was, is it possible to simply adopt the road but leave everything else in place? By no means am I advocating we do anything with the bond whatsoever. I was just the, you know, under the impression that we could potentially take the street, and by Kevin's discussion last week, the street is finished. It's the sidewalks and everything else that still remains on the bond. So no, I would not advocate releasing that bond.
And with that being said, Mr. President, I would be fine with that because myself and Jay Humphrey has looked at the streets, and they all make the approval of the street department as far as the final surface and all that on there. So I see what you're saying now, and I would be fine to accept the street itself, but not reducing the bond or the, the line of credit, whatever, whatever you're talking about there. I see what you're saying.
That's where I was going with it. I apologize if I didn't make that clear earlier.
Can I be a little devil's advocate here and say we do release the street and they're still developing on it? They damaged the street. I know we have a bond to fix it, but we've already released it for them. So would we have the right to use that bond money to fix a street that is in our possession?
To be clear, to be clear, it's a letter of credit, I believe. Isn't that right? Isn't that right, Kevin?
It is a letter of credit, and if, even if we don't release it, there's nothing in that letter of credit that covers the roads at this point.
Right. I don't think we could go to the bank and try to cash in on the letter of credit for something that's not specifically designated in the letter of credit. If I were to go to the bank with a letter on behalf of the town and ask them to release the letter of credit, I need to say in that letter what we're using it for, and it has to be part of the purpose of securing the letter of credit originally, if that makes sense.
But wouldn't that letter also include the street, any kind of damage done to it by construction, traffic, and things like that?
Well, I don't have it in front of me, but I, my guess is the letter of credit specifically was directed to completion of the streets and not necessarily repairs or damage done after the developer finishes the streets. So I'm not sure it covers the scenario. I would be surprised if the letter of credit covers the scenario that you're talking about.
And let me add, Dan, I would say that we are at far more risk of a snowplow damaging the street than a construction vehicle damaging the street.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not really worried about the plow damaging. I'm just like an accident, personal property accidents, what I would be more concerned about.
We're not viable there anyways because people have tried to sue before, and we're not, not getting.
That's my concern. So I mean, Darla, if you can give me the definitive that we're covered, then I'm good with it too. Or if you would like to check into it a little more, that's fine too. I, however you guys want to do it. I just, I just don't like setting new things and letting more developers come in and keep trying to do this. But if it's not covered anyway, then I guess it doesn't even matter. So.
Well, I guess my question would be, so this is that I know of the second or third developer operating in that area. And the road was stubbed out by the first developer. Had they just gone ahead and finished the road, opened it up with no plans to develop the rest of the open fields, we would have taken the roads at that time because it made sense and it was a benefit to the overall town. So I guess I'm failing to understand how it sets a precedent for developers necessarily trying to get the town to adopt a roadway when the roadway's finished. Why would we not take it?
I thought the curbing was not finished. Isn't that considered part of the roadway?
I was wondering if it was a sidewalk that was not finished.
The curbs are in. It's a sidewalk and street trees and curb ramps.
And again, there's a letter of credit issued for that completion, so there's no way to really get, for want of a better term, hurt on that one. I see what you guys are saying. I do. But flip it around. If I'm the developer, I don't want to go to liability. I shut that road. I just flat-out shut the road, and then that is a tremendous inconvenience to not only residents in the area. But I can tell you, when we start taking on water, we have other issues. You have a neighborhood, two neighborhoods, that are completely cut off from emergency services if that road's not open. So where's the bigger benefit versus detraction?
Yeah, and I understand that, Scott, but from what I remember, this was not the main thorough way of Deer Run. That has already been taken in. This is just the back where they've been developing, correct?
It's not, it's not the back. It, it, it's, it's the completed thoroughfare that goes out to Ratliff Road, and all the new construction now is utilizing Ratliff Road in through, in through this road we're talking about. And if we, if we would get in a situation. In through this road we're talking about, and if we, if we would get in a situation where the developer could and would shut the road down. Then the construction um vehicles and uh and any vehicle. Passenger vehicle that would use Ratliff Road would now all be diverted back through town and go through. Three neighborhoods just to get back to the highway, so it would be a detriment to everyone concerned if that happened.
But is it not?
I think that's what Scott's trying to say, this is kind of unusual, if it was a dead end and didn't, didn't become. A thoroughfare, then we would probably just make the um developer wait for us to take it over. But in this instance, the rules work against what we're trying to do, and that's open up uh traffic to flow. To and fro from both ways and alleviate some of the traffic that's going through our neighborhoods now, and that's what's happened. So it's a circumstance that is not. I mean, it's one of the, it's one of the frustrating parts of working in the government is. It sometimes doesn't work like a business, which has a more flexible and open mind to practical yes or no's.
So, so it is Ratliff and Deer Run, the back part of Deer Run, correct? I'm looking at the map right now.
Yeah, you could call it the back part just because of history, but.
Yeah, it's not where the ballparks come out or anything like that, correct?
No, but that's where all the traffic would go to if that that road was closed until we took it over. I mean, it's a, it's a catch twenty-two situation, whether we do or they, we don't. And I don't know how serious it is, but um it, for me, I think it's pretty serious, I think we ought to think about. What we want out of this, and and even if it sets. A precedent, I mean, maybe we need to make note of the fact that it is a thoroughfare, and that's why we are maybe. Moving away from our norm um to consider this.
Hey, Mike, who shut, who shut that down before? When it was just gravel, except everybody was going through it, then one day they shut it down, won't let you go through it?
I did.
Yeah, I mean, it used to just not be finished, I don't know, I don't ever remember, there were bear kegs a long time ago, but Kip, I.
I dim shut it down, somebody complained to I dim about it, that there's dust up there. And they said unless they treated it, if, that's what I was heard, I'm not, I'm not, I can't, shouldn't say that. Uh but that's what I recollect, I remember somebody said it was, there was too much dust up in that area, it was a gravel road.
Hey, listen, and just to complicate the matter and to argue the other side of this. Um I do, I do want to hold the developers and the builders' feet to the fire to get in, get finished. And put things back to normal as much as possible for the benefit of the new residents and the existing residents. So all the hubbub and the unsightliness of undone construction goes away. So there is a good reason to wait and take uh streets over and and and. Uh basically put, you know, the developer's feet to the fire to get finished. So people can live a normal life and not be in. In constant or year-to-year construction mode, and so. Um I mean, that's the other side of the coin, but in this instance. The 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 major difference between most considerations like this is. It is a major thoroughfare in our town, it is as Dan says, the back way in, it's the back door into our town, so. You guys, I'll go take some nails and a hammer and and nail your back door shut. It won't be long before you'll notice it, so I mean, it's just like that for us, that's a back way into town now.
Darling, we've had this discussion, is it even possible to, for us? Barring some type of motion or filing from the developer to take Deer Run separately, or do we have to wait for him to file? For us to take Deer Run?
I think you can, go ahead and accept it.
Okay. In its totality, in isolation from everything else?
I think you can.
I think Deer Run is the one that has the empty lots that are still to be built out.
There's probably one or two there, yeah, absolutely, if not more.
I mean, just to, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I just don't know how many streets they're going to sub in between here and there, because I haven't seen the development plan for a long time.
Yeah, I think the town can take it separately, like I said, based on the memo that Kevin sent around to the council, I'm not sure it's a good idea, but I understand the points that. Scott and Mike Farmer and Kip are making, given that it's a thoroughfare. So I think this is just a policy decision on the part of the council.
I mean, to me, guys, this would be. Much akin to, and I understand it's been literally decades. But i- if someone hadn't completed Sale Street. Between the two splits. And we decided, well, do we take it, do we not take it? Well, then you gotta go all the way around the other end of the split to come back the opposite way. Here we're doing the same thing, we're taking in a road, or I'm advocating it for us to take in a road that. Brings you in and lessens the traffic burden on forty-six, runs the traffic burden on Hart Street Road. Lessens the traffic burden on Starnes and everything else. I just think that to me, this is a. This is a more of a win for the town, albeit an unconventional win. Than anything else we could do in regard to this matter.
And Kip, the the road is completely done, right, the top coat, everything?
Yes, I mean, the the road, the physical road that you drive on is done, the top coat and all that. Whenever, whenever Kevin talks about the curb ramp, that's the ramp from the curb. It's already there to the sidewalk, so the curbs are all there, the roads are all there, it's done, that part's done.
Okay. And typically, typically, just to kind of say a little bit more. Keeping these letter credits and stuff to the developer was exactly the reason to get them to finish the renovation, so. I just, you know, someone said that earlier, and. That's the whole reasoning before, for holding these letter credits and bonds is to get the developer. To get it done, so.
And again, Dan, just to to put a funny point on, I'm not advocating we release any funds. At all. I mean, he quite frankly represented us that most of the stuff was done or close to done. And Kevin, you know, went and checked and we still have some major holes. So no, I'm not advocating we release any funds, but I am advocating we take Deer Run. For our convenience and for the citizens' convenience as opposed to the developers' convenience.
And I understand that.
Further discussions from council? Love this one for discussion from the public, anyone having a question or comment? See, no one will come back to the council. What's your pleasure, counsel?
I say we bring it in, Scott, I'm with you, I think the benefits outweigh the negatives on it.
William, I think you were trying to talk, but you're muted, I'm sorry. Okay.
Sandy, were you going to say something earlier?
No.
Okay.
Anyone else with a comment, because if not, I'm going to propose at least a motion here, and we can whittle away at it as you guys want. So in regard to this request for the release of bond. I would uh move that we deny that bond release for Green Bar Meadows Phase Five. However, we do at this point accept. And Kevin or Kip, you're going to have something with block numbers. Accept the blocks of whatever it is on Deer Run to whatever is on Deer Run as part of the town's inventory at this point.
If everybody's in agreement that the bond shouldn't be released, let's just deal with that as a separate motion and get that done, and then tinker with the language for the roads.
Okay, so that would be my motion, that the bond release be denied.
Second.
Motion second, Sandy, when you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, further, the next motion is the blocks of, and one of you have to help me out. Of Deer Run shall be accepted into the town's inventory immediately.
And Kip, can you do it just the thoroughfare, because it doesn't include some of the dead end?
Okay.
Streets.
Well, I mean, it's not only Deer Run that we are bringing in an inventory, right? When we're going to bring, is it Harrison Court?
No, we're bringing Deer Run by itself.
Oh, Deer Run by itself. Okay, well, it'll be from eleven zero nine South Deer Run. To, I don't know if Kevin's looking at this as well or not. It looks like to one thousand four South Deer Run.
I bet we do this, Kip, if it makes it better, probably easier for everybody and for Darla, and I apologize. What road does Deer Run actually terminate into at the north end, is that Dewey? Is that what we consider it?
Right, no, it's, the north end is, it's either Tecumseh or Chester, I'm not sure where.
Okay.
Hang on, I got, it's Tecumseh.
Okay, so we will adopt Deer Run from Ratliff. All the way up to and including the intersection with Tecumseh, that way it takes all the blocks that we're concerned with.
Okay.
So we don't accidentally miss a number here.
Now, I would like to say normally when we accept streets, we do it by an ordinance and it has everything properly laid out in it. And then it's added to our town code and to our road inventory, so. There will be a need to be an ordinance to back up this motion.
If you could follow that up, next meeting.
I will.
We'll be happy to, happy to do that.
So are we just waiting to next meeting then?
I would advocate no, again, because if I'm the developer, I close it.
But we have to have an ordinance, so Scott.
No.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Back it up with an ordinance, but if you want to motion to do it immediately, I think that's okay. Right, Darla?
I think so, and then I could have an ordinance ready for the next meeting, and you can follow the procedure that you would follow normally to pass an ordinance at first reading, so.
And I will say some of Deer Run is already accepted, I think. Just about to Lucy Lane from Tecumseh is already in town, and then from um. That section that comes off of Ratliff. So far in there is already in town.
Sure, that's why I just made it from Ratliff to Tecumseh, all-inclusive, everything shall be in the town.
Yeah. And in town code, sometimes that just says end to end.
Right. So that's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Sandy? When you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we'll move down to flood report, if there is one, Mr. Farmer.
Sure, uh last um. I believe it was last week, it was a few days ago, um. We met with Christopher Burke representatives, Andrew Miller, who's the point person for our um. Uh flood plans, and we went through some revisions that they suggested. Uh the main one being that um several uh. A little or a lot, several of the uh homes, backyards from Sale Street. Basically down to First Street be added to the plan to um. Help mitigate flooding, and they wanted to add those, and so uh we agreed to that, of course, that's. Assuming that we can get easements off all of the homeowners, I don't believe that's going to be a problem. Um and I'll start that process immediately, so those revisions were agreed upon. And um some of the aesthetics. And some fine details were laid out and we we decided on those, so we'll move forward. Uh the plan should be complete and ready for permitting by. Mid-spring of next year. And by the time they get through the DNR permitting, we might be ready for construction by October. So that's kind of been the plan all along, we also discussed. What we would call Phase Two of flood mitigation in downtown Ellisville. And there is a proposal for uh for a study that would lead to plans being drawn up. For the McNeely Street area, I think uh the Christopher Burke people and the locals. And department heads, if you will, all agree that that should be the next step. Uh so you'll be getting that proposal um to the board for um. Consideration in January, I I've got to get the contract to Darla. But it's pretty straightforward, and it's just like the last one, I can't remember what it was for, but I believe it was just under sixty thousand dollars. If when we present it, we'll suggest that ARPA money be used to move forward with that. And so um we might talk about it on during our work session a little. And I'll talk about that during supervisors' comments, but we do have a work session coming up in January.
Okay. Questions from council? On this one, any questions from public? Okay, so you know, we'll move forward. Uh Mr. Rary, you have an else, or vision else to update?
I have no report today.
Okay, thank you. Um there is no new business, now we'll move to privilege of the floor. And we're having business for the council that was not part of our normal agenda this evening. Seeing no one there, we'll move to supervisor comments, including the town manager.
I think I'll start, okay, so I mentioned the work session, I'll send out an agenda. Right after the first of the year, so you guys can look at it, maybe we can massage it if you want other things in it. Scott, how long do you think the work session should last, I mean, or any of the board members?
You know, in the past, honestly, when we've had these, anything that goes past about ninety minutes becomes counterproductive. So I would advocate an hour to ninety minutes at the max.
Okay, so I'm thinking it's going to take two hours. Just, just, I'm throwing it out there, and perhaps we can go the ninety minutes, but if we do. Well, first, here's what we need to talk about, Envision Ellisville's, they're kind of wrapping up. What they've been working on, it ties into everything that the town's going through now, the growth, the trails, the parks. Annexation, um you know, there's just all kinds of things going on right now. And so Envision also would like some of our time, so. I'll probably send out some emails to the board and we can decide how much time we can give them, but I know they at least. Like to have thirty to forty minutes. I think what we should work on on the work session is nailing down. Be more specific, and that would be me and the department heads on the the plans for trails and parks. And that's what I would really like to spend most of our time working on at the work session. And so we can provide Baker Tilly with enough information, they've already decided. That using the money for trails and parks was appropriate under the circumstances, and. And so I think we can move forward with that, but I I need the board's vision on that. And how it ties into Envision Ellisville and our growth, so. Following up, though, we could just as well have a complete work session to talk about zoning, annexation. Just the growing pains the town's going through now, growth in general. Our bonding, how we utilize bonding for any future projects that we may come up with. How our taxes have been affected by the cess value of going up in the town and it grows daily. And maybe even talk about some TIFs for the west side, and and I don't know that much about TIFs. Some of this stuff I'm throwing out because I think it's important to talk about, I'd like to learn more about it myself, but we are truly. Going through a growth spurt like none. like none other we've ever had. And it's kind of mind boggling and I need the board's vision on this and input. And I think we ought to, before we even have our board meetings, we ought to be of one mind on what we're, what we're going to do in the, in the near future and even ten years from now. So this is our time. This is when Ellisville gets to decide its destiny. And so these work sessions are really important. So how we meet them out and, and how much time we, you know, we give to each subject, it's going to be important. And truly, I could, I'd like to be able to have you all rounded up and maybe make you stay with me a whole weekend to talk about this. I know that just sounds horrible. And now that I think about it, it's probably not doable, but we really need to spend some time together and work out some of these problems, not problems, some of these plans that keep from having problems in the future. And now's the time. I want to give you a first instance on, on what's going on. Throughout the years, I've been here twenty-two years now, and we'll have a couple of commercial hook-ons a year, maybe four or five, but right now I have thirteen or fourteen, I can't even keep track, commercial, large size metered services to put in. And I just, I'm just kind of overwhelmed by, by the growth. And there are people looking at our town on a daily basis and we need to get organized. Twenty twenty-two is going to be a huge year for Ellisville. I don't want to sound like I'm, I don't want to get everybody all scared or anything, but I do feel that, that we've never been in this situation before. We need to be talking and meeting, and I need input from you, if not on a daily basis, at least a weekly basis from here on out. For until, I'm not your town manager anymore.
Well, Mike, I think you're right. And in saying the ninety minutes, I, I do mean that ninety minutes after that, it has always become counterproductive. So it's up clearly to the rest of the council, but it would be my suggestion that we actually split them and we do two work sessions. Because I think the first one, you're right, Ellisville's envisioning process is very important. But Dan, I hope you don't mind if I speak for you for a moment. For Dan and myself, who've been at this council thing quite a bit, we have never, as a council, as a group, been able to get traction with the annexation. And that's, I'm not talking about forced annexation, I'm talking about people coming to us with the annexation with wanting to come into the town and trying to envision where is that going to take us ten years from now? You know, what do we need to do to lay the groundwork now? And I know we've all discussed this, but it's time, it has to be done. And we can't do, envision also any justice at all. We can't do these businesses, we can't do these homeowners any justice at all unless we've got some vision of ourselves that we've actually set about and put down of here's what we're going to do and here's what we intend to do. And I think that needs to be a bigger, broader discussion than what even ninety minutes is going to allow. But I think ninety minutes on that topic alone is a good pass at it. Now, we've kind of toyed with this over the last couple of years. We've discussed it in other work sessions, we've discussed it some in public, but we haven't moved the needle at all. And the needle's got to move. So that would be my thought is, is to divide these things up into two ninety-minute meetings.
And Scott, just to add to that too, Mike, I would like to say that, and I don't know whose fault it is, I'm not blaming anyone, but it seems like we have not had very many of our work sessions. So I think if we get those back on a regular schedule, then like Scott says, we can divide them up and, you know, at least have one every month for sure to get through all this. So I, I think that's a good starting point.
I think one a month is, is a great idea, but it proved to be unfeasible. I mean, so if you could look at one every sixty days or one every quarter, I think that's a little easier. Because I think a lot of these is very important for all the council to be there as opposed to just a quorum.
Well, and that would go back to, I would like to squeeze out a couple hours if, if we're only going to have them that regularly. Because, you know, I mean, there's other things to talk about as well, and they all, I mean, they're all interchanged with each other as far as how we grow. But I think you're going to see movement on the annexation sooner than later, and we have been working about, working on it. But I just, it helps us with annexation if, if we know what our vision is and, and our, you know, our planning ideas, and it helps when we go to these people that have large chunks of land if, if we can talk about that. And I'm not sure, I mean, I can talk about it in general terms, but I can't speak for the board. I need for the board to speak, so.
No, I agree.
And then I think the board also needs to have a meeting where perhaps you have a session with the plan commission. And the plan commission is either involved in our work sessions. But at some point, I think there ought to be a meeting of the mind of the plan commission and the town board in general. I, I know there's some, there's some things you can and can't do when it comes to that, but just a meeting. I mean, basically what you're saying is putting together a lot of the community, just having a, a plan commission and a board, town board meeting. But I, I think the plan commission should be involved a little or a lot in all of this as well. And then let me just really wear you out here. And then we also need to have probably a work session on utility rates, impact fees. We, you know, we go back to that road, the thoroughfare, and taking it on, and they're still building there. And if in fact the building does cause damage to the town, to the road, we just took over a little or a lot, an impact fee might help alleviate some of our problems with monies to, to sustain the road and sustain allowing the builders and the developers on each end of the, the road to continue their work. So there is a lot to talk about.
Well, Mike, one thing too, you said putting an agenda together. You know, maybe if you could just write us a, like a big outline of all the things that are going through your mind right now. And then maybe we can look at those and pick which one, topics we want to use that, that month and get back with you. And that might help too, so.
Well, that's fine, but.
Because once we get in a meeting, we get off topic, you know how we go. We'll go forty-five minutes on something that we just go round and round on. So I think it would be better if we, you know, stick to the, the agenda and go from there.
Well, that, yeah, and, and, you know, it's, it's just like, for us, for the department heads, it's just like being at the ocean. I mean, it's just one wave after another, after another, after another. And so we need to get our boards waxed up and, and ride one of these waves.
Or, you know, doing them at the ocean might help us too, relax.
Yeah, that'd make some great headlines. So, well, okay, so I'll send the agenda out. I just wanted to mention this. I, I, you know, we, we're a small staff and we need your help. And so we want to do well by you. And it's, sometimes it's shoot from the hip because things just come at us so fast. So these work sessions are going to be very important, maybe the first one, the most important one, just to get off on the right foot. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Other supervisor comments? I know Chief Coroner wants to talk about something.
Oh, thank you very much. We did receive our new fire apparatus today. It's a twenty twenty-one Pierce Sabre built in Bradenton, Florida. It was delivered today. Just as a reminder, it was purchased with, being purchased with monies from the Richland County Festive, Marty Stevens. He's paying it through the contract for us. It is a town-owned vehicle and we just have to keep it up and stuff. So it's all good. Sometime after January tenth, it should go in place at the station on Curry Pike. So a lot of hard work went into this. I want to thank Kevin Patton, our deputy chief, and the other firefighters who helped work on the committee. Mark White and Chris Klaus also went down to Florida to do the inspection to make sure everything was good. And they were back the next day, so it was all good. So we do appreciate that. The other thing I want to add is the nineteen seventy-seven Policeman's Firefighters perf is a big thing, as I mentioned earlier. But I also want to thank the clerk's office, Sandy, Serena, and Amber, who helped out tremendously. A lot of paperwork or a lot of electronic files had to go, be processed to make this happen, along with Darla, and making sure that we got our wording right for tonight. And the staff at the fire department, deputy chief Patton, assistant chief Klaus, and the union leadership really made this happen. So I do want to say thank you for all those people. This is a rather big thing and I can't mention that enough. So I just wanted to say thank you and hope everybody has a happy new year.
Thank you, chief. Any other supervisors?
I received some information today that it was, it was just dropped off at the office and I think it's for information only. But there's a gentleman named Gary Ruba that's trying to start a new radio station in Ellisville. So he brought me his FCC paperwork. And I guess I'm just to keep this on file, but I wanted to let you know.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have nothing.
Kevin?
I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Kevin, do you have anything? Okay, got nothing there. Moving now to council comments.
Okay, can I say something?
Sure.
Mike and Kip, I have, I emailed you guys about a traffic counter. I believe it's around Dewey and Second. And if we can track speed, because there seems that there's, I'm getting, there's a resident that had been coming to me regularly about speeders there. And I'm trying to get some data to see if that's a problem or more of a sporadic thing. And I haven't heard back, so I just want to know if that's possible or what we can do.
Well, I apologize, I guess I've not seen the email, so I will look at that again. If I didn't, I'll get back with you to find out the exact address and where the situation's at.
Okay.
And I did see it, William, I apologize. We've been busy, Kip was off and a little shorthanded, but I, I, I did see it and I'm sure we can take care of your request.
Jimmy and them have put, you know, the speed sign out and helped their, Jimmy can probably give you some deep, I think he's talked to the person too.
Okay, we'll talk to it.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other supervisor, I'm sorry, any council member with a comment?
Yes, can I speak on the work session for a minute?
Sure.
Okay. This is my thought. When we have the first work session, I think shouldn't we start with Envision Ellisville? To get the envision of what we're going to do for our town and stuff before we start getting into then what we need to do to get to that vision, like you said, annexing or whatever we need to do. So your thoughts on that?
I think you're probably right. I mean, I, it's twofold thing. I think the vision, I think the Envision Ellisville group has ideas they would like to see enacted. And I think they've made great strides, and I don't think their ideas are, quite frankly, that different than what have been voiced, you know, by a lot of either council members or other people in the public. It's just that this group has had the opportunity to sit down, take the time, and they have really worked to put those ideas on paper and to make them feasible with, with some type of plan behind them. I think they've done tremendous work. So you're right, I think we do need to see here, do whatever else. But I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence in the fact that, with no disrespect to Envision Ellisville, no matter what they come up with, we have people coming to, you know, Mike and to Kevin and people almost every week, trying to get into the town, trying to find a way to get in town or trying to find buildable property within the town. And this council has, quite frankly, and like I said, I've got to, I've got to take it for Dan and I, you know, because we've been on here for longer than ten years, has talked a big game about annexations, but we realistically have not done much. And that's got to stop. And I'm going to know, I'm not talking about seizing and taking property against people's will. That's, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about extending the opportunity to folks who want to join the town to join the town. So I can't disagree with you.
And to be clear, Envision wants to bring their ideas to the board because without the board's approval and support, they can't move forward. I mean, it, it's totally a work that they've put together so the board can embrace it. And then thens, when they feel like they can move forward, but they, they, they're, they're absolutely wanting to come to board and get their blessings and thoughts and, and input. So that's, that's why they want to be part of a work session.
Other thoughts, questions, comments?
Just a quick comment. I've heard that the trail is open from Cars to Ellisville now, is that correct?
It's open, it's open from about Vernal back to Ellisville. I mean, it's not complete, it's not, it's not complete on the, well, I guess you'd call it the south.
I can speak to that if you'd like, since the trail goes through my property. The trail is complete. The trail's complete from Ellisville to just past Walcott Road and where the Woodyard Road crossed the railroad tracks. And it's my understanding that there's a plan, an architect's plan to cross the railroad down at Lous Road, and that's what's holding things up. And there's only about a mile left and it, to do, and it will be complete from, it'll be complete from Cars Farm Park all the way to Ellisville. But there's about a, maybe not even a mile section left to be done.
That's awesome. I just seen some rumor that they had an opening ceremony or something, so I was just curious.
Not that I'm aware of.
People's been using it, Dan.
Yeah, I know they've been using it, but I just seen, you know, and you can't believe everything you read, but I'd just seen on Facebook that someone said that there was a ceremony and it was opened up now. So I was just curious.
The traffic on the trail has been what I would call pretty brisk. Since it comes right through my place, I see a lot of it. And it's a mixture of people with their little bitty kids on bicycles and hoverboards and adult exercisers just walking, dog walkers, bicycles, a little bit of everything. And everybody that I've talked to, and I've talked to quite a few people if I'm working out there, people stop and talk to me. And, and everybody is, is absolutely really pleased. And I have to say that it's, it's a beautiful trail. I mean, the, it's smooth as glass and it's got really nice shoulders on it. It's, it's a ni, it's a nice trail.
That's awesome. Thank you, Dan.
Any other comments from council? Seeing none, I'll adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager? Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion adjourned, meeting adjourned at eight forty-seven. Or seven forty-seven.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Seven forty-seven.
They say it out there. Stay safe out there.